A meeting of November the 18th with a pledge. I pledge to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Marks, you can go to your phone minute. Two items of business.
The room, Joe. The post for the week. Going one million, three hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
So.
Second, all in favor? Event analysis, six thousand, four hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
So we got him.
I make a motion and prove the minutes of the last eighty.
Second, all in favor? Mr. Marks, are you ready?
Whenever you guys are ready.
I'm ready.
I appreciate you guys having me in this morning. We had a chance, just a couple of things with the equipment cost. We've got an additional thirty thousand. This is the year, about every five years when our server's about to go. It's the five-year mark. We bet with Axie. That thirty thousand dollars covers the cost of a new server, backup, labor, things of that nature, just to keep us current. In the last five years, I can say I've seen more, such an increase in body cameras from police, cruiser cameras. I mean, everybody's got body cameras now, which is a good thing. But it certainly takes up a lot of our server space when we're getting these downloads and things of that nature. It kind of eats through our storage capacity a little bit more than it normally would. But that's the additional equipment cost on there. As far as the employee salaries. Last year, we were able to bring on a third investigator. And the return on investment on that has been outstanding. We've been able to move through cases a lot quicker. We've seen a substantial uptick in the last few years with the number of arrests being made, which creates bind over cases, which, you know, increases the caseload that we get normally. A lot of those take a little extra time to review because we're running on speedy trial clocks since there's already been arrests. An arrest that's been made. So I've been very pleased that that has worked out very well. With respect to the other salaries, I guess the easiest way to say this is, I'm not sure how valid that information is. Since we put that together, we've lost two attorneys in the office. We lost Daniel from our adult criminal division. He moved on to Hocken County. And, you know, we, I'm sure you guys have seen it through discussions with sheriff, police, just other individuals. The bouncing around, law enforcement's experiencing, people moving from agency to agency. Prosecutors offices are starting to see that too. People are going towards, towards where they can get more money. I'm fortunate to say that over the weekend, I think we did secure someone to take that spot. I'm not really at liberty to say who that is as of yet. But that shouldn't be anything substantial as far as the salary budget goes. We also are losing Pam Wells, who, for lack of better word, kind of found her green job, working as a staff attorney for the Fourth District Court of Appeals. So I really can't, I can't fault her at all for going and doing that as much as I need to lose her. The problem with that is she had a very sort of niche job with our office. She started out as part-time doing all of our appellate work. And I can tell you from ten years ago, when the assistant prosecutors used to do their own appellate work, there's nothing more frustrating than spending three days in a jury trial, getting a guilty verdict, and then having to spend thirty hours working on an appeal to try and defend that. So, you know, when she took that over, that was kind of God sent for us. Then she took over the child support enforcement as well. So those are two very unique, specific areas that she was able to do herself. I don't know that we're able to find someone that can do those two kinds of things again. That's how kind of unique those are. So my plan is to shuffle some people around in the office to take over child support and also the enforcement, and also help out the juvenile court. Because we're seeing this, you've seen in the media, just an incredible increase in juvenile crimes, serious offenses.
You see that from the juvenile offenses side?
Yeah, a lot of these kids are out there shooting guns and they're just as bad as the adults are at this point in time. So we're gonna have somebody kind of help out with our juvenile court prosecutions with Michelle as well to keep that going. My plan is to hire another civil attorney to kind of ease the gap and then, hopefully, and I really haven't put any feelers out there to see this yet, is to maybe find a part-time assistant prosecutor who can handle just the appellate work.
I think Scott knows what's right.
Well, I talked to him this weekend, but I didn't bring that up to him. He's still busy for the next year or so in Ipanzada County, so I don't know how free he is. And I'm not sure how willing he would be to jump back into the appellate work arena. But I like where your head's at with that suggestion. So, you know, I'm hopeful that hiring in another civil attorney isn't gonna be any more of a substantial increase to the budget, but maybe hiring that part-time assistant prosecutor to handle the appellate work might be something that would be in addition to what's contained on here.
Jeff, what's your procedure in trying to find somebody? Post it, just word of mouth or somebody that you know?
Well, we do a lot of word of mouth locally. It's, it's really, I don't know, depressing's not the right word, but there's been such a low amount of attorneys coming into Ross County in the last decade or so. We've got a lot of people that are going to law school, but they're branching out, going other places outside of Ohio. So word of mouth doesn't necessarily get the job done. I know recently we posted on a couple of websites, Indeed and websites like that. We're also fortunate that the Ohio Prosecuting Attorneys Association has a job posting availability. And ironically, if you go on there and look, you'll find assistant prosecutor jobs all over the state of Ohio because everybody's looking for people right now. So that's, you know, we try to be word of mouth a little bit if there's somebody that we feel is a real solid attorney here locally, to maybe bring them on if they've got interest. But it's also, you know, it's difficult because it's a very time-consuming job. When I started here eighteen plus, nineteen years ago, you've had the opportunity to work as an assistant prosecutor and also part-time in private practice to make a little more money. With the caseload increase, the way that it's gone up exponentially, it's very difficult to be able to juggle both of those things now. So I think that's why our salaries have increased as much as they have, just to try and get solid attorneys in here that are willing to work full-time. I have not heard anything yet. I know the Ohio Prosecuting Attorneys Association is still working with the legislature to try and pass some new legislation during this lame duck period before the end of the year that would affect the salaries for elected officials, prosecuting attorneys, and judges. That might have a nominal bump, maybe a few thousand dollars as far as what my statutory salary would be. If that doesn't get passed before January, it would not go into effect until four years from now because we can't have intern raises for elected officials. So I'm paying attention to it, but I'm not hitting the refresh button every five minutes to see what's going on with it.
They're talking six weeks out.
Yeah, I think, I think when you start looking at, I'm sorry, year two, year three, year four, down the road, the budget for prosecuting attorneys could be substantially more than what it is now. Maybe thirty, thirty-five thousand, which is certainly something that's gonna affect the commissioners, not only with the salary, but also the FOJ, which is half of what the salary is. So I think that's one of the reasons we've had the ability to give FOJ monies back to the county at the end of the year because as the salaries have increased, sure, there's things that we need to spend money on for FOJ, but what's being allotted has been more than what we've needed to stay current of things recently. And I would assume that that's gonna continue if the salaries go up for the elected officials. I don't know if you guys have any questions or?
What's the percentage you're giving?
Rates.
Three?
Four, from last year on these?
Yeah.
You have a three.
The medical insurance, we got some updated news from SEOCO. It's six point four percent, not twenty percent like everybody will suppose. Here it is twenty percent increase.
So that'll go down a little bit then?
Yeah, that's fallen down to two ninety-seven, five fifty-seven.
For purposes of our budget?
Yeah.
Two ninety-seven, you said?
Two ninety-seven, five fifty-seven, that's six point four percent.
Jeff, I'm glad to hear you say that there are attorneys out there. Cause education, a lot of places, airplane pilots. We're in town telling people not to become any, you do the simulator and it gets you out so many hours. And a pilot you fly for airlines, teachers now are saying, we got the master's degree, but you don't have the credentials to be a teacher. They're gonna grant you the credentials to be a teacher because of the lack of teachers. It's, I, I, I would not want to be an attorney.
It's not as bad as some people make it out to be. There's definitely some reward in public service and working for the prosecutor's office, and I still love it.
I'm not taking away from that. I'm saying, I watched a couple of my friends who've become attorneys and the excessive amount of reading they have. You have to know case law and go back and forth between that. Most people don't pass a letter exam first time, it's kind of like real estate spurs. You're right to pass it the second time, so. During my tenure here, I've been very pleased with your performance as a prosecuting attorney. I wish I could serve about you because of, you've always reminded me of a one-legged man in a butt-picking contest. Because you're so busy, you're, and that's, you know, I talk to my colleagues about getting somebody in here to help you. They ease your load so you're not constantly. So. I don't envy your job, but I think you do a great job at it, so.
Thank you.
And I have no questions for you both, other than, gentlemen, if you have something.
You talked to the guy from California. Election night, it was a guy that was, I can't remember what his name was.
I can't.
He just moved, he's an attorney from California that's moved here.
He's not very, he didn't seem like he's from California. For what that's right from?
I can't remember what the guy's name was, but he's passed the card out. I can't remember the guy.
Yeah, if you, if you happen to find that card, let me know.
Moved here from California, like I said, he stopped in election night. He's talking to, talked to me for a little bit and keep whispering, talking again, talking. Give me his card, not, just, sorry, I really don't need to bring out no couple of them, so.
Well, it's odd because we picked the, or we used to have a lot of conversations with the office back before Judge Eater, Judge Schmidt took the bench. All the professions you could pick when you're going up through school and we picked the one that's got homework every damn night.
As a teacher.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it doesn't stop. It's, my wife tells me all the time, she's like, you know, you should take up reading. You know, read a book every once in a while. And I'm like, I spend eight hours a day reading. I don't, when I come home, I'd like to not, not keep reading sometimes, so. We actually need to read something else.
Interesting.
Yeah.
A little more interesting.
Well, non-related to the job.
Are there any major cases coming up here?
Well, we've got, I've got a couple that I might be in trial tomorrow, since we're down a couple attorneys. Nothing of major. I know the next big case that I have is set for January with a female that was involved in OBI crash fatality on twenty-three last December. That's coming up and then a former Franklin County Sheriff's Deputy that we indicted a few months ago. That's coming up March-ish, I wanna say. So I've got a little bit of breathing room to get through the holidays for cases that I'm, that I've got to sign normally, the loss of life cases and the more serious offenses, but we play work in the meantime, just to get the new attorney that we've come to terms with on board and get that role.
Jeff, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Absolutely, I appreciate everything you guys have done for helping out the office and and at least listening to us when we're, when we come to talk about non-job-related stuff like. I'm still working on the, I played phone tag last week with the attorney in Columbus. We're up on Stone Road, so I'm gonna try, when I get out of court this afternoon, to hopefully touch base with him, just to give him a heads up on where you guys are and that whole process and see what he has to say.
So you had the opportunity to speak to him?
No, we've been, after, was it last Monday?
Monday before.
The Monday before, I met with you guys and then I called and he wasn't available for a couple of days. And then he called at the end of last week and I'm going around, so we're just still trying to touch base. But I'll report to you guys as soon as I get yourself through.
Sounds great, Jeff.
Thanks. See you guys.
Thanks.
I have a proclamation for the retirement municipal court judge, Tony Eddy. I'm gonna go all the way through it, but I think it's, it's, Honorable Judge Eddy is the first woman to be elected judge in Ross County. Today, she attended Ohio State University, Catholic University Law School, graduated from Franklin through Mottley, served as a member of the Law Review. In the past twenty years, Judge Eddy exhibits exemplary performance, dedication, and commitment to the city of Chillicothe and the county of Ross versus the law director from two thousand four through two thousand eleven, and then the present as a municipal court judge. Judge Eddy's involvement in Chillicothe and Ross County community through her volunteer hours and participation on a number of boards and organizations, which her commitment to the community, she has served. Now therefore, the Ross County Board of Commissioners gratefully, with gratitude to Judge Eddy, her dedication and commitment to the residents of Ross County, her strong sense of judgment, judgment, fairness, and respect to all parties in the courtroom as a person committed to the overall welfare, safety, and security in the spaces of Chillicothe and Ross County. Therefore, they have resolved that today, which we received this on Saturday, November thirtieth, will be named the day of celebration of honoring Tony L. Eddy, retiring municipal court judge. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
What I just gave you guys is update on board of elections, but Jack, you got one over there. Right here. No, wouldn't be my last one either. I got that information from Kathy.
I got it from board of elections. Are they coming over here?
Latest time of the advance certificate of release, Elmer and Carolyn Wood, mortgage with the Ross County Department of Commissioners has been discussed.
Good move.
Sorry.
This is resolution fifty-two dash twenty-four, Weston Junction Road Bridge, whereas Ross County has received funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission for improvements to the Weston Junction Bridge over the Indiana Eastern Railroad and Jefferson Township, whereas the geotechnical and survey work is necessary to thyme it before with this plan. Therefore, the board authorizes Ross County Engineer Charlie Orman to select, hire, and oversee the consultant contractors to perform the necessary geotechnical and survey condition. The county engineers here authorized to enter the necessary cooperative agreement with the above rail, said rail system.
So, second. All in favor?
This is the maximum financial liability for complex medical health program. It comes from the Ross County Commissioners, pay this every year. The Ohio Department of Health Complex Medical Health Program provides payments for diagnostic treatment and service coordination programs to children who are residents of Ohio and who have or may have complex medical needs. Section thirty-seven, oh, one point oh two three one of the higher vice code mandates the Department of Health to collect reimbursements each Ohio county up to the maximum amount for treatable services provided to county residents paid by the C and H program. The department may not charge for services provided to the adults, assisting by nurses. County year twenty twenty-five, the maximum amount your county will be required to reimburse the C and H program is one hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and thirteen cents. The amount is equal to one tenth of one mil of the county's total property tax evaluations. Request for funds between accounts in Ross County. This is from the Ross County Sheriff's Office from contract services to equipment, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. From gasoline to equipment, twenty thousand dollars, for a total of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This is cover the costs of build-outs for three vehicles purchased this year.
Move. Second. All in favor?
This is a request for appropriation of funds from the Ross County Building Department. For other expenses, three thousand dollars, increase appropriations for estimates of payments to an examiner for service renter, also for board of building standards assessment fees.
So, second. All in favor?
Ross County, this is a request for appropriation of funds from the law library. Increase appropriations to cover recent invoices for Lexus Nexus services and miscellaneous supplies. Advertising and printing, eleven thousand dollars, supplies, two thousand, total of eleven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Lexus Nexus.
So. Second. All in favor?
Brad, we have a, we can move that ball up there somewhere.
Not unless we rent one.
Can we do it in fifteen more things?
I don't know if there's any space there, I don't think there is. The only space that's, you know, available up there is where she does mediation, so I don't, I don't think.
They're cracking a lot of space.
So I don't think there's anywhere in there. I can check, but I'm pretty sure there is.
Brad, is there a possibility that Danny can take the existing law library and bring it down, size it for a small room that'd be used for the law library and the rest of it will probably be utilized?
Yeah, wall, wall section of.
Wall section.
Probably do that.
We need three desks with a computer and a PC and that's it?
Yeah, probably do that.
So I talked to Judge Corzine, he says it.
That's fine.
So I just need to, I just need a little room, that room I got me. Said that what he needed for books on the shelf.
Let me, let me look around and see what we can find, whether we do it there or somewhere else. Let me see what we got available.
Do you know what the square footage of the place in Ross County is?
I have no idea, that, that's a big space.
I just said that's a big, that's a big space, it's getting wasted.
That's probably fifteen, twenty dollars.
Oh, there's a bit of that.
I'll find out for you, I'll have it for you for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. This is voucher, auditor's voucher from Ross County for election workers' compensation. Thirty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and three six cents. Second. All in favor? This is from the Appalachian Initiative Grant from Ross County Planning Department. Community Development Block Grant, CDVG program grant agreement for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, Critical Infrastructure Project, Hartsburg Street Improvement. Move. Second. All in favor?
I have a question. The grant money that they do seek for me. Appalachian community grant money, like the village of Frank. They got, they got that money. Their plan is already running, right? That's the reason they got the money.
Hi, how are you? I just looked at the viewer, I was thinking it was you. I always do, when I see you, when I have a question.
It sounds like we had this money. And the idea of what we're gonna do.
It's easier just to say.
Steal on the wall over here.
Yeah, I know, you know, I can, me and Tammy always get sad. Someone will tell me, Tammy, all the time.
I know.
Yeah, so that's how the grant was conceptual. A lot of money's gonna be going just doing that.
Yeah, and I try something.
How are you guys?
Go. We're having a meeting, right? To discuss the different planes, different, the way I feel, there's gonna be different planes than they already got, planes over there.
Things, things will change because conceptual dark throat, still a bit of the grant money needed on the money. It's, it's just not, it's not built that way, that's where just flying from rank. So then you gotta do, you're gonna cut out or you're gonna add it to, that's the way that would be. It's not science, it's hard.
I mean, that's, that's a Jackson call. Yeah, that's what I said, that's just, we got grant money, like, that's like with the grant money we got, we had to figure, we had to figure what that grant was gonna be for.
But the stadium, you're just gonna, there's no design on it.
There's, I mean, yeah.
It's replacement. They were designing a new stadium, what you're gonna do. This involves the streetscape and everything, the brand new design.
The five million we received for the visitor center.
Yeah.
Will have to go through the same process of having it as a architectural designer.
And that has to go to the armor, which the designer has just completely ignored. And they're focused on that visitor center. We all know, you need to decide what we're doing with the R and D, that's what the branch will do. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this, that's why Debbie's so good right now.
And the, and the grant and the five million are two separate. Different thing, so.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you guys?
All right.
Far as I can, trying to wrap up everything.
Been a busy time.
Yeah.
Second half of November, going back.
Yeah. Just three, four years.
Explain something to me real quick before we get started here because I, I, I hear this all the time when I listen to the news, the national news. How can somebody still be counting votes for the general election?
Oh, it depends on how the state wants to run their elections. Oh, it depends on how the state wants to run their election results. Some people are not even able to start counting absentee's until election night. So, it, it's just up to the.
I, I, I just don't understand how that's allowable. When, when I was young.
Yeah.
When I first had the opportunity to vote, everybody had to go out and vote. There was no other option. I, I, there was absenteeism if you were in the service. They would receive something, but as far as a general population, you had to walk in and vote that day. Now they give you early voting option. Mail-in option.
Oh, yeah.
Absenteeism.
Now, some people, I think they're the, maybe, I'm not sure what state, but I think they just do all mail-in.
Oregon.
Oregon, that's right.
I mean, everybody gets a ballot. You, you fill it out. If you want to vote, mail it back in and it's self-organized.
Right.
And they know that night.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Yeah.
I'm just confused because when you, when it springs out like that, it leads to conspiracy theories of people saying, well, that, you know, I, I know this happened. That happened. At least it seems like the state behind this.
Yeah. You know, just like she said, we, we don't, we don't count the absentee ballots until at night, but we're allowed to get them processed and get ready for that night. If we had, we probably might still be there. It took us all month up to the day. We get through those absentee's. There's so many.
But the early voting was.
Mail-in. Yeah, we're allowed to count and get them like ready. It's just like other states, they're not allowed to. You're not allowed to touch the mail-in. Is there anything to do with that night?
I would die, die. We, we, we would still be there.
You're going to die. A lot more people.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, so, well, that's all I have to say about that. So, if you guys, girls want to get into your votes, that'd be great.
Yeah. I would say we just want to make sure we have a good amount for like contract services. It seems like we have big bills for like election support and.
You have copies of both.
Uh, no.
One copy?
Yeah.
They can make a guess from category.
I have two extras here.
Thank you. Okay. So, yes, our contract services, I guess we have not the same. We want to at least make sure we have the amount, the same amount for next year.
Yeah, it's not what.
Well, this was a big, so, yeah.
Your contract services was a hundred seventy-five and it was now a hundred sixty-five.
Well, so you don't have a general election.
We have a, we have a presidential, right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but that's, yeah, and then our.
Supplies.
Our supplies, that's good. Um. I think we just asked for the, is it three percent raise?
You can do math on that, Jim, Jack.
Uh, if I can find out which one's which. It's the hundred and twenty-nine thousand expenditure.
Yes.
There's a number, yeah, so I'll trigger that up.
And equipment, I think our equipment went down a little bit too. Or, uh, 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 no, I thought it was down.
So, this is what.
That's what we have this year. Yeah, we, a little less on equipment just because we're, we don't have a big election this year.
We got that, we got that new server and everything. I think that was.
Yeah, well, that should cover.
Yeah.
That's so good. Yeah, we do have a new server that we're going to have to get in our office from our IT.
And firewall, all that good stuff, all that.
And that comes from the state? Andy, work on that.
No, it's GoToIt IT. They help us with our, they're contracted out.
It's our IT.
It's GoToIt. So, that should cover it, sixty-five thousand.
So, you need assistance on technology? Andy helps you out on that?
Uh, just cameras, cameras, that's all. We have to.
Everything else is secret, you're mistaken.
Yeah, well, contract out and you do. It's called GoToIt IT.
So, just like. This right here. Or we're getting, yeah, I was heading for the next year right there.
So, I would say that's just our major expenses going to be our firewall and our server.
You have any trouble like other places do with, uh, concerns?
Um.
Threats?
Um, no threats. I mean, we could, nicely, just people now that, you know, they should be able to vote whatever ballot they want to vote, wherever they want to vote.
We did have one of that this time. They just, they thought all, every ballot was exactly the same and, and that they could vote wherever they wanted to vote. Like, they said they, I don't care if I live in another state, they wanted to vote here if they were here. And you could not tell them anything. They were, I told them, it was a senator's state. And that was them yelling at people. I was not yelling at people, it was them yelling at me about it. It was crazy.
So, like a vote somewhere else and then come request a ballot here.
That's what they thought.
Maybe go somewhere else and request another ballot.
We had several people like that. I didn't understand. I tried to explain to them. Then one guy told me the ballot, uh, every ballot, it was exactly the same everywhere. And I tried to tell him, I was like, well, if you live in Huntington Island and Unionoto, we have two different things on our ballot. And he did, uh, he was starkly mad at me for saying that.
Some never ballots from the east end of Ross County to the west end of Ross County.
Exactly. City, I wouldn't have a city on line with the county on, you know, just, you know, just things like issues. I wouldn't have Huntington issues on my Unionoto ballot or, or school or.
I think we had more now than two years than we did on election day.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Just a little bit.
Our clerks did fantastic. It was kept them rolling. We hardly, our, only, the longest wait we had was forty-five minutes. That was on Sunday before election. So, it was pretty darn good.
I mean, I stood in line. I, I don't, I, I, I think you were sleeping.
Thanks. Don't tell on me.
You know, you were like, I, I probably would have had eight too much. But, uh, yeah, they take your license, they go back, they go to the computer, they fill out something on the computer, then they run your ballot. It is somewhat antiquated it seems like, but it, it's what has to be done. And thank God we have to show authentication and the opportunity to vote, so.
We're hoping next election, or maybe not next, but we're hoping to have the, the ballot places a little bit closer so they won't have to run around.
Run around because it, it's quite a big trench back and forth.
Back to those.
Kind of set up a little bit better. But, not bad, not bad at all. They got them done really fast. I'm very proud of them.
Well, another presidential election in the books.
Yeah.
I have other, other questions.
Do you have a question? Because the categories on Southern Commerce, I got the right. Yeah. Your group insurance number. Seven hundred and thirty thousand five fifty-four is hundred and thirty-seven thousand four ninety-two.
Okay. What is it? Group insurance what?
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven four ninety-two.
On the group insurance.
You have one hundred and thirty-five fifty-four. Were your request for next year?
Box fifth one down on that line.
Hundred and thirty-five, oh, yeah.
It's a hundred and thirty-seven four ninety-two. That's what they increased it.
So, one hundred and thirty-seven. One hundred and thirty-seven, what was it?
Four ninety-two.
That's the only ones different?
Yeah.
There you go.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
All good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, till next time. Have a good Thanksgiving. Hopefully I'll tell enough people that. See you guys.
See you guys soon.
Bye. See you again.
Brad?
Yes, sir.
Everything forced?
Thanks.
We were going to open the, uh, the jail, uh, RFP today, but, uh, there's, there were questions on this, on some of the specs. Some of the painters, some of the contractors were having, having trouble getting painters to paint those steel walls with, with the coating that we had specified. So, it makes some changes that, so we'll open it next week. I'll have some stuff for you on the, on the courthouse here soon, but I want to start with what the paint, it's a thing that will adhere to the. Yeah, so they can't, so they can't scratch it off there. You know, if you put, usually if you put paint on metal, you can take something sharp and you can draw all kinds of pictures. We, we tried, we specified a coating that's more like an epoxy coating. It's hard. So, they can't do that. And two of the contractors said, well, you know, we can't find any painters that'll put it on. So, we, we simplified the process a little bit, didn't put it on the stick, a couple of other things, but we think it's going to work.
It was still carpet.
It was a carpet on everything, yeah.
I see, I see, because I seen where they, somebody asked about the coffee.
Yeah, there were, there's, you know, that's, when you put, when you put specs out to bid, people ask questions. That's what, that's why you do it. And that's why you give them time to ask those questions. And that's what they've been doing, so. So, those walls get stitch welded every foot, six inch, a little six inch weld. And then they get stripped over top of that. That gets stitch welded. And then in between the stitch wells, they use that bonding agent that's really hard that you can't chip out of there. We know you can't get that out of there because we use it in jail already. So, hopefully that'll get opened up next week.
So, the RFP for, who, who's doing the welding?
Don't know who, well, we've had a lot of people look at this project, so there's, there's, I think there's two local companies. IRR and Eminem Fabrication are two local companies that have looked at it. And then there's, I don't know, there's Stop Meister out of Jackson. There's, there's four or five other companies that have looked at it, so.
It's a Chuck Otters company. He's developed it.
So, I have not seen anything from him. What's it his is, uh, Templeless Industries. That's what it used to be. I don't know if that's still what it is or not. Is that, is it still that, yeah? Yeah, nothing from them.
Never bought.
Maybe a few. That's IRR.
That's IRR, yeah, yeah.
And they, they are. Next thing is, uh, the, uh, we've been talking about the cleaning service at, at the service center. So, what we did was we put this together for six employees. This is one employee over here, individual. This is what we put together for six employees. I would like to then, now that you've got that, you can look at that. And then I still think we ought to go out to bid because when I saw that insurance cost, six people. That's more than what we're paying now for the product, for them to clean now. Got to remember, first capital was cleaning it. That's probably at a discounted price. I have no idea what this is going to cost, but I've already had two folks hear about this and are interested in bidding on the work. So, I'd like to go ahead and put, um, a bid proposal together and see, see what they, see what we get. And then we can compare it to what we have here, decide what we want.
That makes sense. Some guy called you about wanting to do the cleaning supplies you all got.
Uh, well, we had a couple of guys in here last week that were interested. Trying to think of the name of them. They sent me an email, thank goodness. Allied.
I don't know. They did this, called me. Friday Saturday. I told him, I told him, you need to get old Brad and he'll tell you what.
Well, there were two guys, two guys who came in and, um, the folks at the jail looked at them. I had Loretta meet with them up here. And they had a couple of products that they liked. But other than that, I mean, Loretta's already got, you know, her stuff set up and they've got stuff set up in jail. But they did have a couple of products. This guy took iodine and sprayed it on this guy's pants. And it left a big stain. And then he took this other cleaner and he sprayed it on there and it ran on. Of course, it's all chemicals. That's all chemical magic, you know, I'm sure. But they did have, they did have a cleaning, a cleaning product. They cleaned stainless steel really well. All of the toilets and sinks in the jail are stainless, so they looked at that. I think they may have bought a couple of bottles of that. And then Loretta found something she liked that took stains out of the carpet. So, she, she bought a bottle or two of that. They go try it. If they like it, then do it somehow.
So, who, right now, Brad, who do we get our supplies from? Cleaning supplies.
Do you know what the name of that is? Because you pay the bill.
General Sales and, um, it's the local company that changed names so many times. It used to be Wholesale House.
Yeah. We can't let, we can't let the James George staff, you know, she's, she's advisor to janitorial people. She gets all those people coming in every year to look at stuff and, you know, she, she usually brings it to us and says, here's what I'd like to do. But she hasn't changed in a long time. I mean, her prices, the prices that she gets are.
The bulk of her products are bought locally.
Yeah.
The other companies from Kentucky.
I know most general, all your schools have one company that comes in, writes all the product. They, they hook up the things in the janitorial closets. The next year's cleaning agents they didn't use.
And she, she does the same thing. She has every year. At the beginning, this time of the year, people come in and start saying, hey, we can offer this, we can offer that. She looks at them. But over the last few years, well, since I've been here, I think she's only changed once and it was due price. I mean, she found somebody that could really provide the same things that she was buying at a lot less price, and that's what we're always trying to do to save money.
And you're, and you're right. She needs to make that selection.
She, they got to use them every day, yeah. Here's a carpet cleaning contractor. This guy's done a really good job and they're one of the companies that's interested in, um, cleaning service center as well, yeah. This KK, KK, yep. So, this, this gentleman is a preacher, I guess. And he uses, yeah, the gentleman is that company because we asked him, you know, everybody's having trouble, you know, employees that do that kind of work. Asked him how he does it. He said, you know, his, uh, his, his, uh, folks in his church, that's who he keeps working.
This guy's been around a long time. Brad on his contract, when he, when he does the cleaning. This is three times a year. What's the, is it the whole courthouse?
It's every building we have.
Every.
Every building we have.
ESC.
Every building we have, yeah.
The payment client shall pay the contract of carpet cleaning service as a sum of eight thousand five hundred and eighty cents for each time the carpet is cleaned. They'll be cleaning three times per year. Payment is due within thirty days of the date of the cleaning. Payment is not received within thirty days of the date of cleaning, a late fee of one percent of the gas cents. About four or five thousand dollars.
For all the buildings.
For all the buildings.
That's three times a year. That's three. And Loretta's schedule is, so, you know, like, right. And Loretta's schedule is, so, you know, like, right after the snow, can we get all the salt and stuff in the carpet that you'll clean it in?
So move. Second, on the favor?
I have. Thank you, sir. We'll send that back to you, you have the stuff. So this is a, this is a quote from Burgess and Nyble to install meters in the sewer system out there at,
Union.
Union. And this is to try to find out where that infiltration of the water's coming from, because we don't want to pay the state to treat stormwater. And, you know, from what Wayne has told us, is that after it rains, it can go from ten thousand gallons a day to a hundred thousand gallons a day, and then back down. So we don't think that that's just infiltration from every little sump pump and stuff and that. We, we really think there's a place that it's really recombate. So this is, this is, this is a contract and cost estimate to put those four meters in place for three months during the wet months. Let me tell you on here which months they're putting it in there. So they're not buying, they rent them from a company. They're for the, for the release of.
Let me add a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Right up. We're going to throw. I don't want to say, I don't want to say that right, we're gonna put in an, hopefully, an eight point one mile sewer system. So does it affect, do they do affect the, the systems?
Well, here's, here's what we've been discussing, is we've gotta find out where this leak is, otherwise we're gonna be paying the state for every gallon we treat. They're gonna meter that, we're gonna meter that.
And we don't need to be.
And we don't need to be treating for stormwater, you know, we wanna treat sewage. Because we're paying, you know, so many dollars for, for every thousand gallons they treat. So we wanna try to find where this ionized stuff is happening, so that we can stop that from happening. So this is to find out where it is, and then there'll be a cost to either line those sewers where the leaks are, or to, you know, they have a grout machine, they can go in there and grout the seals and, and close that stuff up. We just don't know what that is, because we don't know where the leaks are coming from. So this is to find out where those leaks are coming from.
Four months.
For four months. The wet, the wet is when, that's when, that's when all the ionized seems to be in the system.
And it's going across, it's like four thousand.
That's just to find it.
I accept.
And doesn't, that doesn't count fixing it once we find it.
When we all turn.
Yeah, we, yeah. Yeah, I don't think there is one, that's, and that's why we went this route, this was suggested by MS folks that are doing this.
First I thought maybe it was, I thought maybe that everybody, everybody was taking their storm, taking their gutters and putting them in their.
Well, we may find that too. So the next thing might be is that if we don't find this leak, this big leak, and that's really what we think we have, is a bigger leak. Because when it rains, it goes all the way out. There could be some, but I know that they smokes tested all these houses before I came here. And they did find some sump pumps and some, some downspouts and stuff running into the sanitary.
Right.
And they supposedly corrected most of those at the time.
Okay, we're reading, maybe. No, Louie. Second.
No.
That's it for now?
He's not. No, you're lying. See, he asked us.
Oh. You want that? I'm not on the lighting thing, so I'm kidding.
He's not, yeah, um, yeah, so I would sit, rather than trying to reschedule for December, because it's gonna get pretty busy, cancel if I would sit in.
Well, you were the mayor for that.
Uh, I don't know about that. If you want that, I will help run this particular meeting.
I, I want you to check, that's what they call me.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, it's a property, straight across from the other house. This Max Mustache Barber Shop sits right there, then there's a small strip of land just to the left of there, it's elevated. I, I think it's Taxolin. It's not very much land, you couldn't build a house, you couldn't do anything on it. But they would likely maybe purchase that property. Or maybe expand it for maybe a three car parking.
That one's for Max. Would you like to purchase it?
I, I don't know what the, the person number or anything, yes, I just know it's. And what's happened is, I think the individuals who own this had that property's passed. And there was an address that they had to go to to get money for mowing the grass, and now that address has no offer. It's a trend.
I saw treasure jack of cancer, and I don't know, is it maybe not, if it was gonna pop up?
Sure.
Maybe just, maybe. I'll keep it in touch if I miss something.
Oh, no.
Okay.
You're the mayor, you're the next one. I have a lot.
Okay. Um, it was the agenda, it was written out, but it. Or sent it out.
If you can, cause of fire.
Sorry about that. It's my fault, I, you sent it to me, I probably didn't. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and get started, that's okay. Um, trustee Bowles might, maybe he might join just a minute later. Mary Queen's not able to join today, so rather than reschedule for a busy December, he asked if I would sit in, so if I missed something, you can stop. Okay? Um, you have the September minutes, either were sent to you or should be in front of you. If you haven't had a chance to read that, have any questions?
Motion to approve?
I say it.
Favor? Okay. And Crystal's here to give her a treasures report. I'm sorry, we don't have that in front of you, but she does have her copy.
Um, at the end in October, our cash box was seventeen thousand four twenty-seven, in November, we paid London Voice, bringing our balance down to sixteen, six hundred and seventeen dollars. And then, I think that's all.
Sixteen dollars.
Sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. I did not say that correctly.
Make the motion. Sir?
I'm off my tasking in my head right now.
All in favor? Any votes? Okay. Old business should be fairly simple. We did receive approval from the state for both the building demolition and revitalization grant for our set aside amount of five hundred thousand. We also received the approval for our one million set aside, which were the Brownfield Grant. We have not received grant agreements for either of those yet, we, we just have received initial approval. So, um, once we get through the grant agreement stage, and everything has been signed and official, we'll be able to move forward with the properties that we submitted, um, in those projects. So that's very good news. Um, there was one property that was not, it was over and above the set aside for our demolition grant. Um, it was on Eastern Avenue, um, and it was not approved. Um, I've inquired as to why, but haven't received word back yet, so.
What makes it a determination?
Department of Development. So, that's that, um, property sales. We did have an issue with selling one oh one Prospect Street. The, if you recall, um, you approved the sale of it back in July. Uh, and we'd been working through the closing process. It was found to have an unclean title, uh, and it's gonna cost about two thousand dollars to rectify that with legal fees. So, um, after all of that is said and done, we are estimated to net about a hundred and eighteen dollars from that sale. The buyers would still like to purchase it, uh, would still like to go through with it. But I guess I'm bringing it to you to make sure that you're aware of, of how that is shaking out and are still okay with selling that, that parcel to the purchaser.
Who disposed that last?
I believe so.
What was the amount that he wants to purchase it for? It all sits at one hundred some dollars we collect, made off of it, right?
He, yes, he wants to purchase for three thousand. Uh, and then between closing costs and the legal fees to clear the title, we would net one eighteen. So it's not much, but a little bit.
Guess the property backed to productive use, so you're.
It does.
I don't have a problem going forward with selling that.
Okay. I don't know that we necessarily need a motion, since you had already approved the sale, but I did wanna make you aware, is that right?
That's good, yeah.
Okay. And then I will.
You haven't heard if we made a motion, though.
Sure.
For safety reasons. Can I? I will make a motion to approve costs for the legal fees to solve the title issue on the sale of one oh one Prospect Street.
Okay.
Also.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. I will kick it over to you, Gabriel, if you don't mind, or the tax will close your update. And I, we did list a couple of properties you had mentioned previously on here, um, just maybe an update, and if there were any additional that you wanted to discuss.
Sure, um, we're making slow but steady progress on this. In the past month, uh, we spent close to a thousand dollars on title searches. So there are a bunch of filings that will be made, and they're in the future. As far as the properties that are listed, um, not a whole lot beyond what's already been listed, but we did file a foreclosure on three six five, it's Second Street. The other ones that are listed are in the process. Twelve seventy-two Moxley Road, uh, there is a damages hearing scheduled for December ninth on that. The Roxville properties are in the process of getting service on everyone. So it's, uh, it's continuing. The property in Kingston, Dixie Fleming, I forget the precise address, there is a second parcel on.
Second Street?
Something like that, I remember it was on Second Street. There is also an additional parcel on Western Avenue, which is vacant. We've gotten service on almost all of the parties on that. The bulk of these are going to be resolved through, through default, which is where the, the people with an interest never respond to anything. One of the addresses, I believe it was Three Ten Clay, um, we've received some communication about. So, but, but it hasn't been from any attorney, so it doesn't appear to be contested. Seems to be more of an issue of the person living there doesn't want to have to pay taxes and wants to be able to live there. But it's, uh, it's, it's in the works, it's a frustratingly slow process, I, I know that. But we're making steady progress. I forget if we had discussed the Bainbridge property at the last meeting or not. That property did sell, but unfortunately, the neighbor did not get the winning bid. It was purchased by the state LLC, and the last that I checked, which was last week, um, the formal exchange has not yet occurred. It's still being listed in the auditors' records as, um, being owned by the same party. So that one, it's a cautionary tale, and that we can take properties before closure. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to get what we want out of it, other than back taxes and costs, of course. But there's not a promise that a property will be cleaned up through that, but, but we'll be optimistic and use the tools that we have available to us.
Gabriel, is this the property that was burnt out?
Yes.
I know there was a junkyard here quite frequently, talking of homeless, where they try to stay living it, something like that, so this is all?
Yes, there is a home in a vacant lot, um, if you're referring to the Kingston property. But, yeah, it's, it's in the process, I would, I'm anticipating that it will go to default, and I'll check service when I get back to my office and see just how soon we can, can make that happen.
So the one in Bainbridge was, was burned also?
It, it was, um, I believe on more than one occasion. The last I heard, it had a mattress at the front door. It, it did sell, and it's in the process of changing hands. Hopefully, the new owners will take care of it and get it cleaned up. But as far as the foreclosure goes, I think we've, we've gone through the process on that one. So, you know, if the problem continues, then we'll reevaluate the situation and see what we might be able to do. I know it was frustrating, I was pretty frustrated when I heard that the neighbor didn't get the property. But, yes, the other one in Kingston with a very similar situation is, is in the works. One of them we just published on, I forget which one it is, all these cases kind of sort of pour together after a while. But we're, it's been slow but steady.
The communication from the person with Three Ten Clay Street, that's not the property owner, right, that's, that's water?
I'm not entirely sure.
Okay.
But, and I forget who it was, I know it wasn't an attorney, I think it was like a, a concerned caseworker or something like that. But the good news on that is that we do know the guy who serves. So we'll, you know, if, did. So we'll, you know, if, the, the county doesn't have a stance on who owns a property. Obviously, uh, you know, our concern is that taxes be paid. And, you know, we're trying to use this as a tool to address other problems simultaneously. But, uh, you know, with the quivers that we have in our arrow, we'll deploy them one at a time.
Thank you. That's a long purchase process. Uh, new business? Any other old business, I guess?
I, I guess I'll ask about, uh, Trish, you and I talked a little bit about the property on Mill Street. Cross from perfection one.
Is it one eighty Mill Street?
White stone, white block, block building that's got a big X on it.
Yes, that is included in our demo and rebate grant. And so we, as soon as we get grant agreement and all of that taken care of, we would have funds to be able to...
Does the owner own that?
I'd have to check that through...
They've already linked with taxes on that building, aren't they?
No, it's, well, there could be, but we pursued it through, um, property standards and light. And it went through the city's, uh, process as far as like, um, letters and notices and all of that.
Good.
So it might have to link with taxes, but I'm not certain, but check it.
I think I know the person who owns it, who, uh, probably paid the taxes.
Okay.
But, uh, I don't know, like, it's, it's in disrepair, it's, needs to be torn down. I, I would think.
We'll have the funds to move forward with it until we bring that, yeah, that one was included. Uh, new, as far as new business, um, we put together a budget, the board should have that in front of them. We, I believe you have this year's current budget and, um, the proposal for next year. If you want to review that, um, if you have any questions, I'll just kind of walk through it a little bit. I did include a line for DTAC now that we have that in, in place to collect. It's kind of a general number for now, fifty-nine hundred or so. Treasure Jeffers, do you know, do I need to request or invoice for that amount for the land bank to, in order to receive it? Do you know?
So it should be automatically dispersed. I can check with the auditor's office and then see if they need an actual invoice to get that money or not. Actually, auditor Leonard's here.
Kind of half listening as I'm doing data entry, what is it?
I got you. So on the DTAC dispersment for the land bank, do you know if you guys will require an invoice for that? Or will that be automatically dispersed or can you follow up on that?
Yeah, I can ask. I think unless it's two owners, we should probably just do an invoice so we have a paper trail. Even if it's not required, why wouldn't we just go and do that?
Okay.
Can we do that?
Sure, the land bank's same point, I don't see any reason why we couldn't.
Let's just make that the practice so that we have a good paper trail.
Okay. So twice a year then?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that. Property sales, um, that's, we left that the same as last year, that's kind of just a guess. This year, we, uh, only have the one sale, so we came in under that at sixty-six hundred. So that's kind of just best guess, but then we do have our set asides for demo and brownfield grants. As far as expenses, um, that again really remains the same with the exception of accounting software. I put in a thousand, um, for Crystal to go ahead and purchase accounting software. I think maybe we discussed this, uh, a prior, a prior meeting, but, um, now that there's a little bit more cash flowing, something more than as, an Excel sheet is gonna be helpful. So if y'all are okay with that. Did you have anything else, Crystal, with that?
It won't be a thousand, because I'm just gonna be quick looks online, just the basics. So it should be way less than a thousand, but until I get it all set up, then...
Okay. And then property expenses, this all comes from how it was broken out within the grant, uh, for acquisition, demo. Environmental Services covers, um, basically the brownfield grant, um, through our environmental contracted vendor Tetra Tech. Uh, the work that they would provide. Legal fees, I did put in five thousand this year, just because we've had this issue with one oh one Prospect. This kind of two, two thousand fee is coming, coming to us unplanned. And so I thought, in case something else were to come up, we would bake in five thousand legal fees. Maintenance mowing and all of that, same as last year. We budget that for every other, uh, every other week, twice a month, basically April through October. Greening, seedings drawing, all comes from our demo rebate grant. Just a miscellaneous kind of mortgage of a hundred in case we were to need it. So that's kind of how that shakes out. And again, you have the comparison for current year versus, versus what I've proposed, but, um, I wanted to at least get that in front of you for approval before we start next year. And if we need to amend anything or if I've missed anything, we can certainly do that in January, February next year. Any questions?
You want a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the budget set for twenty twenty-five.
Second motion?
All in favor? Opposed? Uh, something else I quickly wanted to tap back to, um, Mayor Finney discussed this at the last meeting as well. The opportunity to have the land bank and the city partner to provide assistance with home repairs, affordable housing, um, through remaining ARCA dollars that the city has to use. That money does need to be obligated by the end of twenty twenty-four. And so getting that, getting those funds into the hands of the land bank is a little more nimble than what the city can do with it. So we don't have an MOU to sign today. And I think the mayor would sign from the, the city side and he would have Prosecutor, um, Marks sign from the, the county, the land bank kind of side. But in general, I guess a motion to approve an agreement to be signed, um, would be helpful so that we can move that along. And then we would have, circulate an MOU. It's in the works, um, it just kind of needs to be tied out a little bit before sending it out to you all to review. But it would, in, in general, is, is gonna be very affordable housing, home repair focused. And the administrative work will basically continue to come from myself and Seth.
Well, I made the motion to do that, however you wanna write that, because the ARCA process has to be taken care of by the end of this year.
Okay, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Awesome.
I guess to clarify on that, so the idea is the city would give it to the land bank earmarked for a grant program for affordable housing repairs?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And it's, we're still fleshing out exactly what that looks like. There's a lot of, um, all of the guidance surrounding the ARCA money and figuring out which, uh, which kind of bucket of projects that falls into. If it's, uh, negative impact, negative economic impact or Title I projects, la la la. Then there's different eligibility. And so there will be a low to moderate income qualification as far as like eligibility goes, um, because of where the money is coming from.
Is it considered, when we do this, is that, that money be considered encumbered? Because it's gotta be covered by the end of the year.
Yes. So, yeah, so we'll have it obligated by the end of the year.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be necessarily encumbered, this has to be obligated.
It will be obligated to a...
And that signed contract would be our obligation.
Gotcha.
The federal government, we found, does not, um, just budgeting it and appropriating it does not satisfy the obligation requirement. So getting it into an NOU and a signed agreement would be, yes, top of it. Good question. I think Treasure Jeffers, you have a similar program that you were looking at rolling out in the future. And so we talked about keeping, for sake of where the funding comes from on both sides, keeping them kind of separated, at least for now. But you sent over some, maybe early outline of that program, which looks pretty awesome, if I do this to myself.
I'm pretty excited, I don't think we are counting, but it does sound like almost kind of competing at ideas a little bit, but...
Okay.
I don't know how we can tailor that so that they're more in tandem, uh, together rather than competing. But definitely, whatever ideas you guys have, welcome to bounce off me and see what we can figure out and where at least we're together or not.
Yeah, I think that we can.
Yeah.
And the, the income qualification, I think will be...
Well, to that end of things, as it's evolving, the linked deposit program of the county, we're actually also planning on doing a tier system where you get, if you meet certain income qualifications, you get a greater reduction in the interest.
Gotcha.
Um, so that'll meet some of the, um, CRA requirements from the banking side of it too. So our, our partner, potential partner banks are excited about that. But once again, seems like it's a very similar idea to the grant program you're talking about.
Gotcha. So maybe we can meet, meet it kind of offline and figure out how they tie it together a little better.
Yeah. Yeah, just let me know, we'll figure something out when we get together and, you know, some ideas and see what we can figure out.
Yeah. The last item, at least on the agenda, is to renew our realty agreement. We've been working with First Capital Realty, uh, they've been providing listing and marketing of our properties pro bono. And that agreement has actually expired. And so in order to move forward, we, we just need to approve renewing of an agreement. But I did wanna bring up one caveat of the, and I'm, I'm probably, someone correct me. Miles here, correct me if I say this wrong. The seller and buyer agreements and percentages, uh, changed a little bit this year in the realty world. And, um, we have not stipulated in the past any kind of flat fee or percentage for, um, a buyer's Realtor or what, what we would be agreeing to as a seller, um, for a buyer, to pay for a buyer's, uh, fee. Is that, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, for the most, so the only thing that really changes is how we...
Miles was with First Capital.
Yeah, Miles will work for First Capital. So the, the biggest change or the only change is that we're no longer required, we're no longer allowed to advertise as a buyer's agent commission. So on the selling side, we've been doing the listings for the land bank pro bono, as Tricia said. And then the land bank has been offering a two percent buyer's agent commission to the buyer's agent. For example, the, the example that I used on this one, uh, for Prospect is two percent of a three thousand dollar purchase, uh, after, you know, you can do the math, I mean, it's not a tremendous amount of money. So the, the thought process is, do we offer or, I should say, we, uh, should the, should the land bank offer a little bit of a flat fee as opposed to a certain percentage to a buyer's agent for the work that they're doing, writing the contract, going through the process? I don't know how many hours I have, just, just in Prospect alone, but just guessing, I'd probably have eight to ten hours, you know, between writing contracts and the legal issues that we run into, back and forth and back and forth. And I'll probably make thirty dollars, I think, after, you know, all the expenses and fees. So it's a pretty minimal amount that the agents are getting for selling these properties. I don't think that it needs to be a tremendous amount of money, uh, but something to, uh, maybe help incentivize or, um, maybe make it worth the agent's time, uh, to handle these transactions. Uh, I do receive a tremendous amount of, um, communication, a lot of, a lot of tire pickers, a lot of people reaching out. Uh, they see these properties listed for cheap. So, uh, I do feel a lot of calls and emails for these properties as the listing agent. Uh, but as a buyer's agent, I can see the hesitancy to, uh, even if you wanna mess with something that's not really gonna bring you any money at the end of the day.
How does this differ between a private sale?
So...
There's no provisions anywhere that I know of that account for buyer agents reimbursing the commission. It says type part of them.
So in, in a traditional, in a traditional sale, um, with, with a real estate agent involved, what we do is negotiate commissions with the seller ahead of time. So, you know, at our, at our brokerage, our transaction, or our, our transaction fee for the commission is typically six percent. The listing agent gets a portion of that, listing agent broker gets a portion of that, and then the buyer's agent's broker gets a portion. When I'm sitting down with the seller, we're pre-negotiating, hey, this is how much the listing agent's gonna make representing the seller. Here's how much the buyer's agent's gonna make representing the buyer. So it's, in, in theory, it's no different than what we're doing with the land bank. The only thing that we're doing is we're not charging the seller anything for the advertising, marketing, um, of the property itself.
I would say one oh one Prospect is like an extenuating circumstance by and large. That, 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 at least from my time with the land bank, that would be far and away the most communication and issue that we've had to like jump through hoops for. And in that case, we're only netting not even a hundred and twenty dollars as it is. So, and, I mean, we would go in the hole for a property, which we're not gonna do. Especially when they're listed below market value as is now. So we might, I don't know.
Well, my question would be, do you have a suggestion?
So my suggestion to Tricia was just offering a flat fee as opposed to a percentage. You know, my, my first recommendation, my initial recommendation was two hundred and fifty dollars. That was just to kind of sort of put a number out there. But obviously, that could be, you know, give that something for you guys to figure out if that's something you wanna offer. I'm not saying that this is going to open up the floodgates, that people are gonna come rushing in to write offers on these now that we're offering a little bit something more substantial. But as a buyer's agent, I mean, I'm, I'm losing money on this transaction.
Obviously, yeah. You're, you're one of the, yeah, makes sense.
My suggestion might then be to table it for now. And bring it back up. Think about it, uh, circulate some thoughts and maybe bring it back up and...
Because my next question is our current agreement is expired. Is there anything we need to do for that to continue, right, when we have properties currently listed? So the, the, the properties that the land bank have are currently not listed on the MLS through First Capital. That agreement expired. And the last two agreements that we've had, I think that we've made them somewhere around six months in length, um, somewhere around there. So if we were to continue to market the properties, we would need to get an executed, um, listing agreement, um, signed by the land bank.
Is First Capital interested in doing that without a flat fee clause?
Yeah, so just to kind of sort of put a bow on, on the discussion about the commissions, the seller doesn't have to offer any sort of commission or flat fee for a buyer's agent. The buyer's agent can write that into the contract and then you guys can make the determination, hey, does this make sense financially or not? So we can allow that, we can allow that buyer's agent to write that into the commission. They can put in whatever they want. So if that's the direction you wanna go as opposed to offering a flat fee, that route as well.
Basically, case by case negotiation?
Yes.
Actually, that makes more sense to me.
That's a better one.
And I, I think you can kind of make it known that obviously we're trying to be reasonable, that we don't want agents to be losing money, you know, pushing these. But rather than having a flat fee for a situation like Prospect, well, where we go in the hole, that doesn't make sense. But I think we'd have no problem being reasonable on a case by case basis. So now, are we talking about continuing the grant agreement as is and then evaluating case by case commissions?
First Capital is, uh, uh, First Capital is happy to continue marketing and advertising these properties pro bono.
So a motion to continue agreement as is and then negotiate commissions on case by case business.
I second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mial.
I wanna say, thank you guys for doing that, that is, you're very helpful.
Any other new business? Let's go ahead and schedule... Let's go ahead and schedule our next regular meeting. We've been going every other month, uh knowing December's usually quite busy. Uh, I went ahead and looked forward, um, January twenty seven. That would be the week after Martin Luther King Day. Um, so I kind of, that's the last Monday of January, if I could throw that one out and see how it works for people.
That was good.
I'm sure that's good. Um, you're not a weirdo.
Yeah, I'll make a sketch, I'll make a sketch about that part. Kathy's over here.
Okay. We'll shoot for the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh.
At ten AM, it's our usual time. Um, we'll go with that and if we need to change it, we certainly will. Sound good? Okay, do we have our motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Sorry.
On paper, okay. Thank you all so much.
Hey, don't play my We're not mad at you, we'll be jealous.
Do you see no thing?
Uh, yes. Especially on the weekends.
Oh, really?
Oh, uh, yeah, I know, I know. A little slow, but I And how are you?
Um, well, thank you all.
Oh.
Just asking for support.
Yes. I guess your government's fine with that.
Yes. Yeah, um, it's coming up at the end of the month. And we've been advised to keep the house less than two million. So, um, so we've got two components for this project, the beginning, the rest we're doing in the second phase. On the big recreation play out.
I think you're good enough.
Okay. So this would be a continuation of the work that we were granted by um ACGP for. So what we're looking to do is, the grant administrator has said threshold of about two million is they don't want to go with that. Make it a good project or a little limit for a project. If we're looking at doing another slip return, this would be in between two of the sites we're carrying on ACGP. Um, and then we would also, after that, if we're allowed to do that repair, it would give us um three point five miles between the end of the Mussman Station Road to Frankfurt um that we can retape. So three point five miles, that'd be our second component. Um, and it would give us a tighter area than that has been basically new, it's refinished.
Yeah.
And hopefully have all the emergency sites arrested at that point that are urgent.
This is, you're asking for money through the debt application of your
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good one.
That is an app, is an acronym for what?
Transportation Alternatives Program. It's through, um, my department of transportation, but it's federal. And I believe, um, I sent Kathy and Sergio Skidia with like an explanation project, yeah. And um the letter you provided in our previous application, we use that as a template. Um, I think it would be easier to to do this, but so right. And if you wanted, I thought with the ACGP happening, maybe there was a line or two about the importance of recreational tourism to Ross County, how it's becoming, coming to the forefront now, maybe you could add into it.
Uh, and and you need this by next Monday.
And that would be fantastic.
So I understand that because you said it at the end of the month.
Yeah.
So, so may paperwork be kept and do other, our approval?
I think we already got the approval through our, the Ross County District Board. And I'm, yeah, just a few other letters of support I'm still trying to put together. But working with um an engineer, they were ever, who are also working with with ACGP to provide us with a stamped estimate for the project.
On the side note, uh Erin, do you know when they're starting on the two slips?
We, right now, this week, the engineer's going out to finish up surveying and like a geographic analysis of the of the sites. And they have geotechnical scheduled for the middle of December. So once they get those report back, reports back, they can do actually the actual engineering. So we're looking at bidding it out late spring, so sometime next summer, say, executed and done.
Good.
Yeah.
It just seems like it's gone off for six years now.
I think you're right. Yeah. I know since I've been here, that one site at the Double D Bridge, you know, there was a trail there when I started. Right now it's, yeah, it's gone.
Are they, they're also looking at replacing the bridges?
We're um looking at Bridge Eight or like a total replacement. We're also technically
Which one has observation?
That is um, that is one of the Double D.
Yeah, that's Double D.
Yeah, so they'll be looking at new decking. Some of the bridges need some more infrastructure, um, work on the actual infrastructure of the bridge. But most of them are just a decking issue. So and we're technically looking at working um to see about doing some replacements with just culverts for bridges that are able to have culverts versus a repair and culverts with them solve issues for a longer period of time.
Well, it seems like when you fix a slip one place and not a slip will come somewhere else.
Right.
Especially there at Long Pancreak. Just, I know the railroad uses a junk junk riprap there to prevent that from happening, but that's happening.
Yeah, no, and that is the nature of water too. It's, if it doesn't go where where it wants to go, it'll
It's just
It'll
That's the first time I've, I've walked northward to that number whatever, D bridge, whatever. That's first time I've seen that on that side of the
Yeah.
Drusel.
Yeah.
The water was just hanging out.
Yeah, it's gone. Ten feet eroded, not more.
What the erosion is taking place. Off of Maple Road, you turn to the right. I don't, I don't know what the name of that road is. I know the pencil's around that right. Salt Lake.
Salt Lake, yeah.
Right there at the base of Salt Lake, erosion there's there.
Yeah.
It's it's working hellboy back there at Salt Lake. So
We haven't had much erosion this year along with the drought.
Yeah.
This place was starting flooding and rains coming.
This seems like it'd be smart to plant a lot of trees in that.
That's been one of the the thoughts, like a river birch.
Yeah.
Enjoys the water.
And gets and gets a root system set deep so it holds the soil.
Yeah.
So Erin, you'll have uh what you need next Monday.
Wow, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate everything you do over there.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Definitely, I I'll come up there a second. Right, yeah, I didn't pass you. We didn't do it. Thanks.
I have some other questions.
You're welcome. Thanks. I was gonna ask if I was getting to see her.
I'm waiting. We got a one o'clock meeting?
Yes, yes, we do.
I'll be coming from Iowa. Thank you. Take care.
What time, Brad, did you tell Jody?
Uh, eleven ten or eleven fifteen.
Is that not what you told me?
Oh, no, I thought I told, I thought I told, I just couldn't remember if that was.
Yeah.
If you want to sign that letter today, I can print that off for you.
If you, if you do that today. When she comes back, we're gonna discuss this uh purchase of the project. We'll discuss Mayor Comfort's CCA.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if I wanted to, I could go to that conference because I'm still commissioned. But what I saw on the email, I think it would make sense for you to attend the conference. Since you were the incoming commissioner, so
It's up to you. I I'm in, I'll be attending a complimentary uh new member luncheon on Wednesday, meeting and luncheon.
I'm sure you get the picture. Because they won't send it to the aisle.
Yeah, and then Thursday I can be there the whole time. Friday I have, funny enough, another obligation like right down the street, so I'll be able to probably pop in, pop out. But, I mean, they tell you, I got the letter Saturday for an event that's in two weeks, so if I miss part, I think Friday's only half a day anyway, when I looked at the schedule, so I'd be glad to attend.
And you had an inclination of wanting to stay there?
Um, no, I'm not this year. Not this year.
I know that uh, I know when Jack came on uh two years ago.
He attended it.
He covered the cost, didn't he?
Yeah.
So if there's any costs associated with it. You've been that young Brad, Brad, Kathy.
See, I don't even have a, a like, I haven't even registered my membership yet. I just got that welcome packet.
Yeah, just got registered and then there's a place on there to mark um uh pay now or pay by invoice. But they buy in, or they're giving their cat there and their cat there.
Because when I came on, they had a spring one, so I didn't get to go to the winter. Spring was in
Spring.
Newark.
So normally it over, this year's different, but normally it overlaps with the uh Ohio Farm Bureau uh in me, at the same location. And um, so I've always been, I've always been there that week uh anyway, but now I'm no longer on Fox.
Sure, worth moving into another role, so. You came off that board? Are you still, are you still the head of the Republican Party? You know, maintain that.
Oh, yeah.
I, it's, you don't have to answer that, I just
You asked. You did. So right now, I mean, I'll just give you guys an update on, I've been uh elected two weeks ago tomorrow. And I've spent, I'm spending the next however long left of getting everything ready for being here, which is including landing, landing the plane on some things that I just won't be doing anymore. And then restructuring the other things that I plan to continue, but obviously not going to be able to do it within the same operation that I am now, so.
Then come back in the first year, you'll have different things to add
Yeah, well, that's
to your plate.
Exactly. Exactly.
This never evolves.
Yeah.
So is that a yes or a no? Good politician, right?
Exactly. Exactly.
Boy.
It's a yes or a no?
Yeah, correct. I'm gonna give you another thing too. I know we love to test, we are so good. But uh, I just want to make sure we stop this. I didn't sure we do this one more time, just to get this thing signed too. It's a little bit of that. Pretty great, you know, it's contract separation. So you, I think, I think it's all the cost, which was seven, it's it's seven point seven percent of the total cost of the project, caused it there. If you read this thing that that Rick and Brady sent, I asked him to put in the list of contracts and make sure they looked at everything. So this was, this contractor was revising November fourteenth. Since then, they added another, they added another piece. Uh, they added, maybe they did it on this one, I think. Yeah, number six. So we're gonna, we're gonna make them take out uh their phasing and bidding packages piece. We're gonna scratch that from their contract, even scratch number six from their contract. I asked them about that last week. If I don't like the idea, then automatically get seven percent. In the contract, it says that if there are any changes like that, that they have to ask us for that, for that change. They don't automatically, like if the contractor says, you know, I want you to, I want you to change this, they would automatically do it according to this contract. We're not gonna allow that. They gotta come to us first and say, hey, you want to change this, can you make this decision?
Yeah.
Just that way.
So three and six is going to be taken out?
Six and three.
Six and three, okay.
Yeah. Just so you Well, this is the uh, the letter that Aaron was asking. Right on behalf of the Ross County Department District in support of a recreational redevelopment, rehabilitation project page two submitted funding for transportation alternative programs twenty twenty four, twenty five grant cycle. Have a motion?
Sure.
Second. Hello, the court, uh the uh Star Ward has asked for a new truck for old truck. No longer functioning, it's a new transmission. Also, the new transmission outweighs the cost of the truck itself. And three bids, two from Norris, one for fifty six, one for fifty fifty two. And one from Coglin. Yeah, Herstein, Herstein.
Curtis Dodge.
For the Dodge for fifty, forty-eight. There's some discussion on that. It's a long bid. I don't have too much paper, Rob, I can't. This is the Ram?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the Ram.
Forty-seven.
This thing is Dodge trucking. Forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars.
So those are the three. One of the other two trucks, okay?
I don't know, but they have a lot of mileage on them.
She said almost two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Last time she was here.
You guys, they got a check. I'm still stuck on the van, but she didn't go to the van.
I don't think they took it up with the clearance of the van. And some of the places they go in the county, it's charred up. It's somewhere behind the clearance, like, that truck.
Part one of the road and walk to it. Well, we have a bid here for a twelve for forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars, Herstein, for a long bid, two thousand, twenty-four Ram, model two thousand five hundred. No mileage.
I'd like to make a motion for the purchase of that truck.
Second. All in favor? I'm just trying to figure out, because I couldn't see the small print, to see if there's a cap that came with that.
I haven't seen, so she didn't send this to me.
She has sent a sign.
Oh, she did.
She also sent, I didn't, I didn't see your name on it, but she sent it through the email.
No, I don't have it.
The other two were fifty-two and fifty-six. I was with them. I can't see that small print on the back. Yeah, because, you know, if that price, you know, before, my thing is, is if that price didn't count, the shell that she says need on the back of it, and the other two's due.
Then it's about the same.
It's about the same price. Because you can't put, you can't take a shit of late. Shell, put it on back of the Dodge. Dodge has a strange thing with her.
Is that the one with the transmission issue now?
Yeah. Chevy, you can't see one. It was a Dodge, back where the tailgate is, is wider than what it is up towards the gap. The print's so small, you can't see.
I got something for you guys, which is good. When we do the budget next month, if the screen is being used, like, if we're looking at something on the screen, is there not a screen, is that right? Am I wrong about that?
Say that again. We'll try to figure that out. I heard, he's talking about if we show something on the screen, we're not, we can't do live. You know, we can.
I think, I think Andy said we could, but only if we.
Did you do live?
Something on the screen.
Like, if we do budgets next, next month, and we put them on a screen, are we still live with that on the screen?
That's what he said.
Okay.
Well, the only reason I ask you, do you want me to be ready to put the figures up on the screen or do we want to try to figure something else out?
I'd rather, I'd rather put them back up on the screen. I don't, I don't let it work the last.
Yeah, I think that's perfect, but I, I don't know if that messes something else up. I just want to bring it up, but whatever, you guys want to do. So the small print for that truck, is that what we were talking about here?
Yeah.
Think we could, I can pull it up on my phone, if you have a certain, if you can word it out.
Well, I was just trying to, it shouldn't be on the options.
So none of those have camera shells on them. None of them have the backup alarm or she said camera either.
I, I thought the, the Ram does have a backup.
She said none of the three she sent this morning had any of that on them.
I thought the Ram had.
That's what she told me, so.
So, so still, the Ram is cheaper even when we have to go with the cab.
Yeah, it sounds like you're going to have to put all that stuff on any one of those trucks you buy.
Unless we take it off the window, get rid of.
Yeah.
Maxes it up.
I don't see anything about backup camera or cap on these.
I think a backup camera would be, not an option, it's on there, because I got one on mine.
You got a camera on yours?
That's how I can get so close to the wall.
Wondered how you did that.
Two cents. The other thing, Brad and I were talking, do you guys want to get some kind of memo out about the insurance coming in a lot lower than what we were originally told? And how that might affect salary considerations? Yeah, I can set that up. I got, I got the email. Chat message. Okay. I'll get something. Okay. That's why I got this on the screen. So you guys should take care of that. Yeah.
You get a chance to come. See if they're over there. Because I know she said right there.
Yeah, you did.
So, yes, you can show, you can show that little, little up arrow there in the middle of the screen in the bottom, maybe you could show me.
I see.
Yeah, you could say, hey, I want to share a tab, a whole window, the whole screen. So you could open up the budgets in another tab or whatever it is, and say, oh, I want to share such and such. And then that would be displayed to the viewer.
Like on Teams.
Yeah, similar to that. Yeah, you could do that, and just say, hey, I want to show the entire window of whatever's open. Since the only thing we have is a Google Chrome tab, that's the only option that shows up, but if you haven't had it.
Well, Andy, when we, when we start the budget, you can come up here and kind of walk us and Jeff through in what we need to do to share it screen.
Yeah, so I opened up Word there, now that it's open, it'd be an option. Hey, I want to share this Microsoft Word window that displays all the budgets or Excel. Okay, so yeah, this was every departmental budget. You're running that live, so you can say, I want to share a window, Word, and you would say share. Now, obviously, we're not going to, but that's it.
Does that make the budget enlarge, now it's squatted to the side or something?
I don't know, exact count is still a little bit.
I know, but I share on Teams, I've got to, gets everybody on my hand side, moves over.
There'll probably be some sort of picture in picture, but I'll tinkle it between now and next Monday. So we have a good idea what it'll look like, and obviously you've got some screenshots, so you'll see what it looks like. Good deal. I'll if anything.
Thank you. No, so I've noticed, I think I need glasses. I keep saying that. Oh, I'm waiting for my Coke, my screw. Cheers, kid, how you feeling? Morning.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
You didn't run over here.
And I'm just old climbing the stairs. Oh, the military used to say, that is my V T for the year. I'm waiting for my co-vice chair. Are everybody known and ready for Christmas?
I'm starting.
I always ask my wife to make sure I'm there. The land is completely broken away from here.
Yeah, he, he's, he's there, we need him, but yeah, he isn't too much of a bummer anymore, so.
I mean, he did, he did a good job, you know, he's a big man. He's busy with everything else, I think he's, he's probably on every board and chill copy right about now, so.
Must be good, and I've been watching on another board here.
I keep his check working.
Yeah.
Okay, the reason we moved you up today, so you understand, the two commissioners have all the answers.
I, I left thirty? We can do this, I'm sorry, yeah, I just moved ahead.
We can wait a little bit longer, but.
Got to get it going. They can always catch us. Let me text them, see what they have to say. All right, are you close?
I'm looking on it now, so if necessary, I can get more. I know Joanna's next door, I haven't seen her, she must be coming right over to her office, so.
All right.
As I've been doing.
They have to take care of it.
They'll take care of it.
You leaving already?
Yeah, I got some things I got to do.
She says she's walking in now.
I heard that.
I heard.
My wife said, come on.
I've never met that gentleman in my life, but I've been with her fifteen years.
Hi.
Yes, she is. Joanna should be here.
How are you guys?
Let me put my, turn my way on, because I know as soon as I'm sitting there, somebody will call. All right. We'll have one more that's joining us, so if you go ahead and get started, if you.
Your wife, I'd be fine.
They said they have another basement to take care of. All right, well, good morning, gentlemen. It is my pleasure to be in front of you here today. I am Jody Wilson, I'm the Ross County Attorney Chair. This is my co-vice chair, Brandy Day Morse. Brandy Morse. All right, and she is, has the bulk of the presentation, so I'll just start with the overview. First of all, I want to thank you so much for your support in the past, as well as hopefully in the future. We as a, as a committee have really, really changed some things, but also we've expanded our ability to help. We've helped this year well over eighty-eight people in this couple of years. We asked for what is in the pipeline. And we've also, our skip program has been very helpful this year also. And she'll, she'll go with most of that. But most of all, I want to talk about what we've encountered as far as the good things, but also as some of the barriers that we've encountered. The good things is everybody wants, wants us to help. And the ones who qualify, which be returning Ross County citizens or their families, we've been able to help pretty much. The biggest thing that we have been able to help them with is, I'll just give you an example, one young man went to school to be a truck driver, we were there to help him with some of the expenses while he was there. We had another young lady who had got her cosmetology beautician's license while she was in the women's reformatory. And when she came here, she just needed to start a kit, and she would have been instantly hired by one of the local beauty shops. So we were able to get her in there, so that way she could earn a living and also support her family. We've helped quite a few families on the skip side, which is to help them get to visit their loved ones, but also so their, their kids can participate in some school activities and things like that. I think that if, if we just look at everything in a nutshell, we know that everything is getting more expensive. You know, we all know that, just by the time of year. We, we've been able to use what you gave us and put it to good use. One of the biggest things that we have, and I got to, I got to thank Brandy for, we haven't been able to keep a coordinator for a, in and at the time, Ms. Pauline did a great job in a way. She, she retired and resigned in June. This mother, co-vice chair, Ms. Joanna Diddy, we couldn't keep one. We hired another young lady, and she had another job, but she just couldn't do it. So Brandy basically stepped in, she does, on her, on, on, not on her, her time as a deputy sheriff at all, but her time as a coordinator, so we were able to choose, able to take care of. And Joanna's been great, she's, a lot of people come through her. Of course, she sees a lot of them in her position on the police force. But I think the biggest thing that we, that we run into is, is everything. The, the needs outweigh sometimes the, the resources. And one of the resources that we have a problem with is, of course, um, let's get real transportation and housing. And I think that's a resource that everybody's dealing with here in the county. So, um, we want to thank you for all that you've given, given us, um, but we're going to, we have a, a Brandy has a presentation that we worked on and she's going to put together and kind of, kind of give you an overview of what we're looking for coming here, all right?
Brandy, I know it's in the presentation, but I was asking anybody, you said you helped eighty-eight people this year, though, that is this eighty-eight people who have been released and back into the reentry program, or, um, uh, how many people visit their loved ones in prison or?
So actually, um, so our skip program, which is supporting kids of incarcerated parents, that program focuses more on getting the kids, um, or the significant other caregiver to that prison, so that they can visit. Um, as far as the reentry coalition, we typically help once they are released, or if they have been out, say, within the past year or two and are still struggling with various things. So, um, we get a release sheet from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections, um, quarterly. And on that release sheet, I then look at that and then I'll reach out to them through, um, it's called the Getting Out Act. Um, it, it took over by a path the prison used to use, or like Mel and, um, services like that. So I'll reach out to them, um, prior to, uh, their release, just to, you know, see if there's a way to contact them or if we can set up, um, you know, an appointment. But I gotta be honest with you, um, you know, a lot of people don't even have a phone number, they don't have an address, uh, or if they do, they, they're not sure where they're going, so it's been more successful for us to meet with them once they are released. And, you know, I, I'm a two-ton convicted felon myself, so I can speak from experience. Um, I know when I was locked up, you have nothing but time to think about everything and how you're going to, um, how your future is going to go and how your life's gonna be, and, you know, you have all this laid out and you think you have the details and you try your hardest to do it, but, um, unfortunately, what, what comes with a lot of our offenders is also addiction. And we know with addiction, once one domino, one, once one domino falls, several of them fall. So I could be told no in an employment and that will then make myself, um, my self-esteem go down, which then makes me feel I'm like never gonna be anybody. And so then they start to fall off, but it's usually not until like three or four months after their release, sometimes even after. So even though we try to reach out to them before they're released, we usually typically see them, it's within that year mark of being released. Did that answer your question? Kind of?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I guess my other question is, I was kind of wondering, last year I think we gave thirty, did we give three, thirty-three thousand dollars to the reentry program?
Either thirty-three or thirty-five.
Thirty-five, so I was thinking thirty-five.
It's in the ballpark.
Yeah.
I was trying for thirty-three. Okay.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah, um, yeah, so, um, I, I do want to thank you guys for, um, allowing us to come in front of you today, and I do want to, um, make it very clear that, yes, I do work for the Sheriff's Office as the Director of the Day Reporting Program, but I am not here in, in that aspect today. Today I am coming as a full supporter of reentry, I've been, I've been going to the reentry coalition since two thousand eleven. It's been through a lot of changes, sometimes I was the only person there in that room waiting for more people to show up, um, through all the changes. But I have consistently, I think, been the only member that has gone, and part of that is because of my experience. When I got out, reentry was so hard for me personally, and so I want to fully support reentry in any way I can. Um, I was voted in as, I've always had like little pieces in it, but, um, this past year I was voted in as a vice chair. So, um, and then right now I'm, I'm an acting coordinator outside of my day recording duties. So I do, I did just want to make that clear, but, um, if I could, um, go ahead with my presentation, is that okay? Um, okay, so thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys today. Uh, my name is Brandy Morris Hayner, and I'm here on behalf of the Ross County Reentry Coalition, an organization dedicated to supporting individuals as they transition back into our community following incarceration. Our mission is to empower these individuals to rebuild their lives with dignity, self-sufficiency, ultimately creating safer and healthier communities for others. Each year, hundreds of individuals return to our communities after serving time in our justice system. Many of them face tremendous challenges like lack of stable housing, uh, limited employment opportunities, limited access to mental health or addiction, which seems to be getting better, um, and support services, just to name a few. Without proper support, these barriers often lead to recidivism, perpetuating a cycle that affects not only the individuals, but also our families and us, right? Our neighborhoods, our local economy. The reentry coalition works directly with these individuals by providing resources and filling the gaps in services that may be lacking. We help these individuals build pathways for long-term success. Research consistently shows that reentry programs significantly reduce recidivism rates, which leads to safer communities and lower costs for taxpayers. In the past year, our coalition has supported eighty individuals, and we are very, very proud of that number, and forty-seven kids with various services and referrals. Even with that said, we believe as a team that we can do better. Um, this year has been a year of change, uh, growth for our coalition. Almost everybody that held a seat prior to the beginning of the year, um, has been replaced. So it's a, it's a fresh new team, fresh new eyes, um, new excitement. So, um, it, it's been, it's been very refreshing for this to happen, a little scary, a little nervous, right? Um, and we've been through a couple coordinators, but I believe that's just, it goes back to having an independent contractor. It, it's hard for any business to have independent contractors if you can only pay a certain amount for a certain amount of hours with no benefits, right? So you gotta, you gotta find a certain individual that also, um, you know, is passionate about reentry and, and has, um, some criminal justice, uh, not so much personal history, but ju- just familiar, familiarized with it. So, um, we still need help, and, and we know this. Um, despite our positive impact, the demand for these services continues to grow, and it continues to grow on a daily basis. So the need for further funding to ensure the, the sustainability, we have tried to keep up with current trends and funding a coordinator's position, but have found that it's hard to compete at eighteen dollars an hour, twenty hours a week. Today I'm here to ask for your support to continue and expand our work. With funding, we'll be able to secure a coordinator position and provide more resources and outreach for the justice involved. Your investment would be, would enable us to serve more individuals, build on our proven successes, and ultimately create a safer and more inclusive community for everyone. In addition to the immediate impact on our participants, I urge you to consider the broader economic and social benefits. Every dollar invested in reentry services saves taxpayer money by reducing incarceration costs, lowering crime rates, and creating more productive members of society who contribute to our economy. For example, so it costs a hundred and five dollars and seventy-five cents a day to house a prisoner. For jail, it costs seventy-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
We're coming to find that stuff for now.
Huh?
I think it cost four. We can go to the on track from there, and it was a hundred dollars.
So let, so, so I went off the national average because I knew our jail was going through construction, and anytime you go through construction, it raises that price, because I, last year when I ran the numbers for my program, it was at like a hundred and seven, I think.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, it's fine.
I can remember, that number sounded really negative to me, that, but now with something, if we send our, our, our people away to another institution, it's gonna cost us over a hundred dollars, so.
Which costs extra.
I didn't mean that, you're doing great, go ahead.
No, that's absolutely fine, I didn't want to put that number because I know things are like changing a little bit, but, um, yeah, so, so yeah. Um, but for the purpose of this, we'll, we'll go with the national average, but we do know it is a little different in Ross County. Um, so we typically help people, uh, for up to a year, so when, when we sign somebody up for reentry services, we, we keep in contact with them for at least a year. Um, sometimes it's even longer. So, but I just done a year, just for, just for, um, you know, kind of a roundabout number. So if you put that into perspective, right, so we are saving, um, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents per year, per participant, for them to stay out of prison, right? Now, we've helped eighty-eight people, do the math on that, it's over three million, right? Now, if we're talking about jail, just jail, using the seventy-two dollars and twenty-three cents, that's twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-five cents per year, per participant for jail. Now, what we know, or what some of us know, is that e- either, either way you look at it, um, typically a person that isn't dealing with supportive services in one way, shape, or form, they can at least go back on a technical violation. If they go back on a technical violation, that jail will hold them for at least fourteen days, right? Because APA has fourteen days to decide what they need to do with them, right? So not only are we using jail services, but we're also using prison services too, because if they do decide to send them back for however amount of time, um, which usually in between twenty days to six months or longer, it could be years. Um, so there, there's that time too. So this is, I, I'm just giving like a little snapshot, but we do know that all of these services are involved, right? So adult probation is involved, we're involved, um, the prison system, the jail, um, and then, you know, all of the manpower it takes to even go and find these people and lock them up, and then, and then deal with them on a daily basis. So roughly what that comes out to is two million, three hundred and twenty thousand, twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents for the jail, three million, three hundred and ninety-six dollar, three million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for, for the prison, and this is per year with the people that we've helped. With our skip participants, um, I didn't even do a number, because I feel like it's invaluable, right? We're dealing with children, and I, no, honestly, I didn't even know how to put a number on it. But if I'm speaking from the heart, there is no number you can put on it, because I feel like too many times we don't deal enough with our younger generation. We're a reactive society instead of proactive, and I think with skip, it allows us to be a little bit more proactive, right? And so we get to have, um, just those conversations with them, just letting them know that they have somebody positive in their life, um, that is helping them, whether it is, you know, we helped a lady buy some diapers, um, you know, and just something that small is so big, it's, it's huge, right? Because then if you think about it, just with the stuff that I do Monday through Friday, eight to four, um, you know, if they don't get diapers, they're gonna put diapers on that child, one-way shaker form. And if that means stealing from Walmart, then that's what they're gonna do, right? And so I think just, you know, I, I didn't even put a number on it, because I really do wholeheartedly believe in prison people, um, just because they have certain access to things. Um, it, it was one of the hottest years we've seen in a long time last year, and we were able to buy swimming passes for them, you know? Um, so that was, that was kind of a big thing that we done. Um, we are very proud of, of what we've done and the progress we've made, but there is so much more that we can do. And I invite each one of you to join us in making a lasting impact by supporting the Ross County Reentry Coalition and its mission to give individuals the tools to succeed. Together, we can build a community that not only believes in second chances and invests in the potential of every resident. Because at the end of the day, once they're released, that's what they are, they're a resident, they're a neighbor, they're a waiter, they're a waitress, they're somebody that is, you know, fixing our car, right? So, um, I do want to thank you guys for your time, your consideration, your commitment to a brighter future you guys have done. You guys have made it possible for us to do the work that we have done, um, for the last several years, and so we could never be thankful enough for that. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
I could tell you, I, I mentioned Wayne when Jody came in. Uh, I, I had not heard of the skip program.
Yeah.
I was, well, it was always, I'm sure he had his very end of the reentry. And I think the one thing that we asked initially when we started this, which was maybe six, seven years ago, Wayne is very persuasive. We wanted to know who else was joining in and helping as we were helping, hoping that the city would do it and other organizations would, uh, would chip in. Are there any other organizations other than the county commissioners who are helping with the reentry?
So I did write a grant for United Way. Another thing that I bring to the table is I'm a grant writer, um, so.
Does the city provide any funding?
The city had previously, it was, um, I don't know the details on it, because that was Wayne. So I don't know the details on it, and I apologize. Um, we did talk about it at our meeting last week, that we would like to approach them.
So, so we'll talk about the elephant in the room now, how, how much you ask if we ask you?
Fifty thousand.
Um, I want to add too on hers that this year, the reason that we were able to look at it differently is all of us attended, uh, I think us two, we attended the, uh, conference for reentry in Orient. Um, that way we've got a sort of a, what, what's really going on around the state, how are other counties doing and whatnot? We, we talked to people, and they were amazed at how, what we were doing, I mean, you know, we told them what we, what we do and how we do it, and how we got funded, and they were like, you were funded?
Right.
I mean, they, they, they blew them away, and I said, well, I kind of really cares about our returning citizens, so that's, that's what. Um, the other one is, we hosted a seminar here for families and, uh, friends and people who are interested in reentry and wanting to know what programs are available, not only here, but also O D R C when they get out, because they have a reentry program also. That we, our partnership with Jim Nail, who's our, um, she's actually the contact person for O D R C region for here. So we, we've done that, um, I want to say I'm, I'm very proud of it, because I have two co chairs that are fantastic. And let me, let me tell you why, we got one that's passionate, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a convicted felon myself that, um, um, came back from it, but you know, I had a lot of help also, but passionate about it. And I have one who is so passionate about it that, you, you know, she, she's on it constantly, and she comes from. She will, she, she'll, she'll come and, 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 and no is not an answer, you know, you better find another word for it. But I've never had to say no, because they always come with, with valid arguments, um, they always came with valid reasoning, and they came with the heartfelt, um, with the, uh, returning citizens at, at, at the forefront. Um, when we say we ask for fifty, I know it sounds like a number, but the numbers that we save, I believe answers that too, so. Um, I just want to say that, you know, add that a little bit to it. We even planning, um, I don't think, twenty, seventeen, eighteen, if you want to come, will you go say something about that?
Yeah. So we are doing, um, so, and I do want to say, when, um, ever since skip came on, I was never really for it. We love those kids, right? I'm, I'm a mess, there's two things that, that will pull my heartstrings, and that's animals and kids, and kids. I'll, I'll say yes to everything, they'll have new houses and cars and everything, that's up to me. But, um, so I just didn't really deal with it, and let Pauline and Wayne do their thing, and, um, but since I've been like in it, oh my gosh, it's amazing the stuff that we can do for these families, it's amazing the stuff that we do for these children. And so part of that money would, would go for that, um, for skip, and then, and then part would go for reentry as well. Now, I will say, and this might be the wrong thing to say, um, but yeah, we asked for fifty thousand, we are thankful for anything.
You know, one, one thing that, that, um, I would look at when I deal with this, and, and I'm a former mayor, and I've thought that I've been involved in this since then, since twenty twelve, so, uh, I understand the importance, I understand the impact. And when, when I look at asking for additional funding, my question is, what are you gonna do with that funding? And how are you gonna measure the effects? So I'm asking that now, it's an extra fifteen thousand over what we, we have been getting to the eighty-eight people go through the program and have done this. I, I love your justifications, because you talk to my life, I want to know the ROI on my question.
So.
So, and I'm not really asking for an answer right now, because I think you can look at intangibles and tangibles, it's just not all money.
Right.
So the impact on lives, the impact on, I, I want a major, a measurement and a major step to know what we are getting back for our investment, and that's just the business activity coming out.
For day recording, we give, um, certain statistics, certain reports, we give a performance report, and then on top of the financials, so, um, I can come up with something. So I can come up with something.
Okay. And we did donate when I was mayor of the city to the reentry coalition and go ahead and again.
I will, I will. So I do wanna say, I just started doing the coordinator position the last month.
Month.
So I'm just now getting my bearings and trying to go through everything. But, yeah, I plan on, I plan on trying a lot of different avenues. I'm kind of chomping at the bit right now. So I just need to be let loose and do it.
Well, you know, I think, I mean, you don't have to eat the whole elephant here. You guys are the guiding hand if they come out of prison and get indoctrinated in the back of the study of life. And there needs to be programs and employers and in social services that pick it up where you leave it off.
Absolutely.
And I, you know, I'm a believer in teamwork and handoffs and handoffs to people you're trying to change, whether it's reentry, whether it's getting off social programs and fulfilling their own dreams with their own means of income.
Absolutely.
I think that has to happen on a mega scale, so it has to be a team effort.
Absolutely. I think we have some really good players that come to the meetings. So, you know, we do, say we fill the gaps in services, meaning we will pick up the reins where someone else can't. And just one example would be a birth certificate, for example. There's a lot of places that don't have programs that can pay for a birth certificate. We need a birth certificate to get everything, right? So however, Community Action, I think, just had one. So if we know of someone, which we're, you know, very privy, I think, with all three of us, with our day jobs, we know the resources and the programs that are going on. So we were able to send them to Community Action. So it's kind of like use their money first, right? Like, and so we'll send them to different places, so use their money first. We work in conjunction with the Catholic Church on Main Street because they do a lot of the same stuff that we do. So, you know, if we can send them there first, we'll send them there first.
And then you have to look for handoff points. You're going into normal flow of society now, we're gonna go help somebody else.
Absolutely.
We've also started what we call the Empower, the Empowerment Program, which comes under Pike County, which doesn't even use, I don't know if it uses David, but they have those, it's only like seven, eight of them in the state. And Pike County got one. We were able to meet with them and they have a lot of resources. And they, in fact, he told us, the county doesn't matter, the resource need is what they look for. So we've been able to make contacts with other people because there was a word that was given to us when we were orienting and they said collaboration.
Collaboration.
That's what we, that's what we're shooting for here, to have a collaboration of all the services in here. I was just at the Ross County Social Services meeting the other day. So, once you have seen it here, just let you know, I am the program director for a mental health assistance treatment program, we at Chillicothe. So we do have the mental health side and substance abuse side too. When we, when we talk to these people, try to get them in there. Because we also know that if they're not getting help, not only are they depressed and doing things, but they tend to return to prior acts in which got them locked up also. And a lot of them have low-level crime to deal with, drugs and alcohol. And if we can kind of help them understand that you don't need to turn there, that we can help you with what we know, what we have, what we can offer you, then things can also get better too, so.
That's what we're looking for too, is collaboration. Could we give you some money? We need other people to collaborate and say, hey, if you wanna...
We're asking to trust you, literally. We're asking to trust you.
Okay. Well, we appreciate what you do, we have your ask. If you can get that information to the three of us, I'd be great that we could see that and then we will be making the determination on our funding in December.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, just for clarification, what exactly would you like me to send?
Kind of a measurement of what you've done this year.
Okay.
And your expectations for next year.
And how you're gonna measure the improvement.
Got it.
If you have any questions, give me a call.
I was looking at the time, I'm looking at eleven thirty.
We're okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Do you want to be in at, at anything else, Derek?
No, nothing.
No. Thank you, gentlemen, somebody's...
Eleven thirty-five.
Gentlemen, ladies.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a plane?
What do you mean, you want?
Yes. J D C has a meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. In fact, they wanna know. You're gonna do the J?
I'll do the J.
Dwight's going?
Yeah.
I'll do, can you let him know? Before you leave, there's two contracts.
Where you going?
Where you going, Derek?
You going J D C?
Yeah, I'm the chair.
Oh, that's right. So you two go on J D C, I'll go plane.
Those are inmate contracts for other facilities. Island County and Sider County. What you gonna make is not for those two, but Island County and Sider. I don't think we did Sider. We had Fad. Fad and Gally. Each prisoner exceeds some of seventy-five dollars per day for male prisoners and eighty-five dollars for female prisoners. This is for, this is for, the Sider. Sider, Sider Jail. This one is Highland and the agency. The sum of sixty-five dollars for prisoners per day for Highland County Jail. Sixty-nine dollars. Second.
Any distinction between them?
Not there.
I never seen that. Any other ones that says there's a distinction between?
I'll see you guys next week.
See you later. See you, babe.
Oh my God. Sign the roll, please. I signed for the Highland County.
Scratch it, scratch out the top for Ross.
I'm gonna let you do that, okay. Might as well go ahead and sign.
Yeah, I'll be okay.
They don't like it, they can send them there again. They'll talk like this about the first page.
That's right.
I talked to them anyway, so they're good. Fad County, their mission's gonna get... Their chair, come on, buddy.
Yeah, they're all about that. They said that still wasn't gonna add up to what we're getting.
Yes, it said still not gonna add up to what we're getting already.
Kathy, can you make some time next week to put a poll of our legal there?
Yeah, I'll see you folks later.
See you later. Have a good week, guys. That's the V A, they called me, I'm sitting there waiting, Drew. They called me and they said, where are you? And I said, I'm sitting there waiting on you guys coming in. They're okay. I still waited here for those fifteen minutes. And then the guy said, well, you didn't have to be here. And I said, you guys showed me how to be here. We'll find out at the end of the day if I had to be there or not.
Twenty-nine, Brad.
Huh?
Nine.
Okay.
She's about to be here this time.
What's he coming in for?
What's that?
What's Paul coming in for?
Talk about key locks and...